45 AM, this is a special board meeting. Is it okay if we dispense with prayer and pledge on this one? Right, you'll call the roll.
Pat Rooney?
Here.
Kathy Cox?
Here.
Nicole Cohen?
Here.
John Mastin?
Here.
Entertaining motion to approve the agenda.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes, we have a single item before us, 3.1, a discussion of possible action on use of the high school athletic field.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended that the governing board discuss and at desire take action on the use of the renovated Lake Havasu High School athletic facilities at Lee Barnes Stadium. Voters approved the bond measure in November of 2016 that included disrupting remodeling and renovating Lee Barnes Stadium. The facility hosted its first event, the captain's volleyball and shovel game, on Friday, August 31st, 2018. Welcome for the pre-construction phase of this project and any inquiry as to the availability and future use of this renovated facility outside of district organized events. The district has a process in which individuals, groups, and organizations can inquire or make arrangements to use the district facilities. There identified an LHSD number one facility use manual, which you should have on top of your line.
I will entertain a motion, open discussion on 3.1. Open discussions.
You're never going to have another motion to approve it?
Well, we don't have anything that we're going to approve just yet. It starts as a discussion and then it can become.
Well, it's never started as a discussion until today, so I'm just double checking.
I've actually done this several times.
Okay.
Okay, Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Okay, here we go.
So just, I guess, to start the discussion, as mentioned in the action item, before the pre-construction phase even began, there had been discussions internally and within the community as to whether or not these facilities would be made available to the public, individuals, groups, organizations. So the response, I think, during the construction phase was we'll wait and see because we weren't sure exactly if we were going to lock things down to protect the assets or if we were going to continue to make the facility available to others. So Mr. Krieger has had several people approach him in his capacity as the athletic director. And I think out of fairness for all, including the public, it'd be nice to just have this discussion and if need be to act on changes perhaps maybe within this facility use manual pertaining to the use of athletic facilities.
So, I'd like to hear what, this doesn't happen without somebody having an idea.
So I've had several, like, youth leagues in town that have contacted me about using the facility for like a one-time deal. The Pop Warner is hosting, they call it their Super Bowl. I think they bring in a big tournament with a couple teams from Havasu or a couple teams from the area. And they've asked about using the facility, I think they are looking at it November.
November 10th.
Yeah, November 10th. Looking at it, I had one of the youth soccer leagues reach out about asking if the high school field would be available, that they could use as an additional field for a soccer tournament. I think that soccer tournament already passed. I've had Special Olympics asks about using the field, the facility. They have always used the track over at Thunderbolt, but now that the track is moving over to the high school. And then I just got an email that I forwarded to Mike, a lacrosse team from Pacific Lutheran that's going to be in town in March, was asking about possibly scheduling like an exhibition game with a California school and then using our facility. So those are the types of requests that I'm getting. I haven't gotten anybody, we have had people that have asked about, you know, using the track at night, is it going to be open for running? But the bigger issues are these groups that ask for that one-time usage, like a Pop Warner, like Havasu Soccer League type thing.
I'd like to hear your feelings because you're the athletic director and this is a facility you control and you're responsible at some level for the maintenance upkeep and longevity there. I'd like to hear what your feelings are on it.
Personally, I think it's part of being good neighbors. We do go to the city and we'll say we do need to request your fields. So I think in kind of in that return, there needs to be kind of a little bit of a give and take when they need or would like to use our facilities as well. For kind of these usage where it's, you know, a Pop Warner, you know, is using the field one day or a soccer league is using the field one day or, you know, Special Olympics is using the field or these other types of things. I don't necessarily see major issues with it. I think it would be different in terms of the field is open at night for the public to kind of come in and use. I think there's other controls and other issues there that we probably want to discuss. But under these types of situations, really we go through the facility use agreement, request approval, get approved, any other fees or something like that. I think that would be manageable and I think it would also put us in a good position with the public and the other youth leagues that we do have worked with.
Now, is there a process for the lower field to be available to public?
Possibly, I mean, that could be open more. I know that that areas, we do have that, those areas locked off, but I mean, there are sometimes gates and things like that that people are hopping the fences and getting out there and using it. But that could be an area that we do open up.
And by lower, I mean that practice field that we just put in.
We've just started using that ourselves. Soccer was out there Tuesday night. I know our football class has had them down there, but that was recently that we just received approval to use that facility.
And then what do we do with the Thunderbolt track? I know we have some public access there.
As far as I know, yeah, there is public access there. I would, if that stays more open, that would probably be a better option than opening up the high school facility to people to come run. Because the issue that you run into is you will have people that don't take care of the facility.
Right.
I mean, you will have people that will bring their dogs. And it happens, it happened at Thunderbolt when I was the track coach and we were out there all the time. There was, people had their dogs out and didn't pick up after the dogs. Sometimes people would bring their bikes out, sometimes, you know, kids are riding their scooters, sometimes. So I think that's maybe a different discussion, but on how open you want to have that and.
I'm just trying to get a feel for what we do now.
Yeah.
Because I know historically that the high school track was open back when it was cinder and it wasn't as much of an issue. And I do get at least one person that we kind of, hey, when are we going to have that track open so we can go do our running and this and that? And I know there's good reasons not to do it. But, and I kind of already said, you know, hold your breath. But I think that's part of an overall discussion. We kind of have to let the public as a whole know what we're going to do in the long term.
And I mean, with the track, there are still some issues that, resurfacing and painting, that still need to get done.
Right.
So I think in terms of immediate usage of that facility, I think we should kind of operate as is. But in terms of today, having a way to kind of deal with these requests from the community, like the Pop Warner group has, the soccer leagues, you know, these types of things. Yeah, you can come use our facility, we're okay with it.
Brady, other than the issues with resurfacing the track and finishing that off, is the main concern the artificial turf? Is there any other concern really, other than the artificial turf, protecting it?
It's the artificial turf and as well as protecting that track investment.
Okay.
Because I mean, that's still going to be under warranty. There's still things that we're going to have to follow to make sure that that warranty stays in place. And then that just becomes a control issue. If we could trust the public, you know, 100%, just come out, run on it. If we could say, hey, stay in lanes four through eight so we don't get that first lane pounded down.
Right.
It would be a much different thing, but all of a sudden we're going to have bikes out there, we're going to have, because that's what we have at Thunderbolt.
I went the other night to, the band had a performance out on the field. And I was very happy that this is the final performance of the year where the parents actually come out and follow their student around and do what their students do. It's funny. And I was very pleased to hear the band director say, no gum and no food out on the field. The problem was, when she said it, it was as the parents were getting up and moving. And I thought, oh dear, no one's hearing this. And it's this conversation, what strikes me is how much does it cost to repair or can you repair gum on the artificial turf? Can you, what do you do? I mean, it's not going to grow back, so what do you do? And food that's spilled down in there. And believe me, I don't care who they are, they're going to bring food and they're going to bring power aid and they're going to bring, they're going to have gum.
And sunflower seeds and.
And they will. And how you, what's the cost to get gum out? What kind of damage does it, is it permanent or is something allowed for cutting that off or cutting that out of there?
I don't know what the cost of repairing, you know, a piece of gum. I haven't seen gum on the field yet, but we have had other food items. You know, we've had, you know, football games, all of a sudden the manager ends up with popcorn out there and I've had to like.
Right.
Pick up the popcorn, take it off. You know, sometimes we have people that eat sunflower seeds in the stands with the Havasu wind and all this land up on the field. But a lot of those issues, when we get the vehicle in and we're able to groom the field and sweep the field, we'll probably clean up a lot of those food issues. But again, it is one of those issues of making sure that people respect the facility. We do have signs posted around about what is allowed on the field, what's not allowed.
Including gum.
Yeah, gum, sunflower seeds, tobacco products.
That cleaner you just mentioned will get the gum out of there?
No, I don't think the sweeper will get the gum out of there. I don't, I don't know.
So I mean, if we were to do this, I mean, could we have a deposit that they put down in case there's damage that they get back? I mean, I'm just talking, thinking right here.
They, there is sometimes a fee associated with who uses the facility.
The facilities use agreement that you have regarding the manual is pretty comprehensive. I think that following this manual and making sure that those who are renting the facility or using the facility through this process are aware of the requirements in using that stadium and what not to bring or what not to have on the actual building track.
But that's a use, a usage fee, right?
Correct.
Is there anything that is a deposit for damage that they would get back if they were?
Everyone who would fill this out is required to provide insurance.
Okay.
So there is insurance attached to it from a liability perspective or damage perspective.
Is that updated with the new field turf requirements?
Well, that's what I have that note in here as well that we probably should create. I think it's on page 11 of 17, somewhere in that area. Another bolded group talking about, says use of athletic fields, but I think we should probably also add use of athletic or artificial turf fields. So that way they also see that. So that's just a suggestion on updating one part of this facilities agreement.
Has anyone who's used the field had to use their insurance policy to, I'd like to see what that looked like in action for somebody who rented our facility and then they had to go to their insurer and collect that and get it to us?
I'd have to go back and look to see if that's happened and when, where that has occurred. Not, it hasn't happened at our new renovated facility yet, but I'm sure somewhere in the district that man.
Usually with insurance, I mean, you could get back maybe $250, maybe $100, but $50 probably.
Well, it's not like your auto insurance. A commercialized early policy is going to pay 100% from dollar one. If it was a $50 claim, I'm pretty sure that we could work that out with whoever we were dealing with. You know, if we're talking $1,000, $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 to make the claim. The claim is with the insurance company, not the individual. And the insurance company would go and invest that to what their usual cost per innings would be or what our actual costs are based on our estimates or so on. And then we would receive the funds from the insurance company.
I'm just anticipating the bureaucracy and retake for trying to collect it from the organization who go to their insurer. In my experience, and I've been doing it five years lately, I've only had a bill one time for damage. And it went directly through the organization because it wasn't a major amount and we just billed that directly.
Insurance would be used only if it was made for damage. Now, on page five of 17, it does say damage to buildings and content. It does, in the first paragraph, it does make it clear that last sentence, it says, repair of damages to the premises shall be at the expense of the lessee. So there is a clause and there is a sentence in there that does state that they are responsible for the repairs. And it would be included in the actual invoice sent to that particular lessee for the renting of the facility in the first place. So it would be the rental charge and then the damage invoice as well.
And then there would also be establishing the procedure after they came that somebody would have to go inspect and do a report immediately so that the organization could come over and check it out. I mean, you're creating a probably not a big deal.
That is, that is on page, page 12 of 17. It says, the facilities have not been restored to the original condition and if before that it talks about the site principal or designated inspecting it, then the district shall restore the facilities and the cost of such restoration shall become the financial obligation of the lessee.
These organizations that are asking have used the high school field before in the past, but it's just, obviously, since we've dumped over $7 million into this, I think it's a discussion that needs to be had here. But historically, I don't know of any issues or problems that we've had with these groups. I mean, they're.
You know, I don't think you've had problems because you had a grass field. You know what I mean? It's.
And a dirt track.
And a dirt track. So how do you damage a grass field and a dirt track? Just like you brought out, Brady, there's a big investment in this. And no one's going to look out for more than the athletic director and the principal of the high school. And it should be of a real concern of ours because in the past, you know, when that's opened up, you'll have people out there playing soccer. You'll have them on the weekends out there and play at football leagues. And so you've got to be real careful about this. And you say, well, we can recover this money. But the fact of the matter is, a facility can deteriorate in a real hurry if it isn't guarded. And even if you have groups come in, like you're talking about these other groups that want to come in. And they'll say that we're going to supervise it, but the best supervision is the people at the high school because that's their home, that's their investment. So to just say, it's easy to go ahead and say, well, come on up here and you can go ahead and play. But if there isn't someone down there supervising that and saying, this is the way it's going to be, believe me, it doesn't happen. And you, you know, there's just a lot of concerns I have about that because in the end, it's going to really fall on your backs up there. It isn't going to be someone at the district office going over there. It's going to be the onsite administrators that are going to take care of that place. And, you know, let's say you have, you know, Kathy brought up the thing and you brought it up. Let's say you have a lacrosse team come in there and all of a sudden they're going to be there and they're going to demonstrate. But, and if they have fans there and like you say, they maybe take something down on the field or whatever, you know, if there can be something. But when you open it up wide open, and I guarantee you what's going to happen when people come up and run and it's open, they're going to run on the inside lane. They're not going to run on the outside lane. The two inside lanes are going to get used up the most. Like you say, in some places I've been, like down in Yuma, they had an area, an all-weather track, but it was a grass field. And they had, they had gates that kept dogs out and bikes. But in most cases where I've been, those facilities are very well-guarded. Unless they're supervised by the school personnel, it just doesn't happen and you just don't go in and get into them. And I don't think, you know, you have other fields up that high school. Like you were saying, that they expanded those grass fields down there that are available for use. If people want to come up and, I don't know, can they still get into those?
At the moment, we've locked.
Yeah.
The gates.
Yeah.
To try to keep people out.
But you know, the soccer league, not the soccer league, but we used to run into that problem all the time up there. In fact, at night, I, because I live there and I go walking there, I've actually shown up there and they've got the lights on. The old lights, they could go in and force the thing open. Of course, I had to tell them that that didn't go happen here. But it's a real headache and it's a thing that you really have to think over because you put a lot of money in something and you want it to last and the public expects it to last. And then all of a sudden you say, this will be okay. It doesn't turn out that way.
I'm not advocating for like just wide open, people can kind of come and go. I mean, that's a decision that you guys are going to have to make, but it's more or less.
Certain groups.
Certain groups like this one-time use, like that Pop Warner has or the one-time use that the soccer league has or the one-time use. I mean, those are the types of things that we can make sure that there's somebody on our staff that can be there.
And it is, there is verbiage in here that requires the district lease on it. Those.
Yes, on page eight of 17 down the bottom, it does state that that would be at the lessee's expense. That there is to be at all times a district employee present.
It seems like we've put in those tennis courts and that, and sometimes you'll catch kids up there on skateboards and whatever. And it's just something that is, people will use something and they don't take care of it a lot of the time.
One of the suggestions that I would have is that we actually insert a section in this agreement specific to that facility for the track and the field. What I also have seen then, and as Mr. Rooney, as you mentioned, is they actually identify a field supervisor. So it would be a custodial or maintenance or grounds person who must be at those events and a security. So it would be an opportunity for campus to be at overtime. But they have to pay for those to be present in any event in which the public are going to be. That way you ensure that the field is open. So that's another thing that could occur that would be included perhaps in the hourly rate that I don't know if that covers.
We probably have to take a look at the stadium versus the hourly rate now.
Yeah, because I noticed that the baseball fields are more than the football field hourly rate.
We'll go Scotty and Scotty.
So, kind of piggyback off of the past Bullhead Thunderbirds and I kind of drove the point home too. We're talking about protecting a field as an asset. And in my role, I also have to protect an asset that we have. And the more people that come to use this facility, the more Brady's required to do with no compensation because that's in our contracts and we, it's duties as assigned at that point. There are no master stipends for administrators. He has a difficult job and a very busy life just running the high school sports programs. And then to add other layers on top of that, I'm concerned for the employee aspect of this of how many more hours is Brady going to be required there? It's not, it's not comparable to opening up the pack for a two-hour or master performance. If a club comes in here, a football, they want to run their Super Bowl, that's an all-day event that Brady on a Saturday now has to be there at 7:30 to make sure the facility is opened up. And he has to be there the entire day and then he's the last person that leaves that stadium. And I also want to protect our human asset as well as the physical asset of the field.
And I do want to let you all be thrown off the board in December, but don't call me in regards to this.
You've done that.
I could foresee a much different fee schedule for the use of the field based on what you said and knowing our increase in cost of what we're providing. I think that if we're going to require an employee to not only do their main function, but also then to have oversight on these things that we need to really look at what hours are being invested and incorporate that at some level into the fee that we're charging. What also concerns me is I think that as much as we like to task the athletic director directly with this, we should have some type of a thought process on cross-training one or two other individuals so that we're not cramping an athletic director's private life.
So let me touch on that before you continue on what we normally do. And we're lucky right now because we have a few people going through their administrative master's degree. They have to perform so many hours and we get those hours built into their program. And that's how they help him out with who's required to be at soccer games, who runs the basketball, volleyball and things of that nature. So that duty is shared to a certain degree, but when we have nobody going through their master's degree, it's leaning on some employees to do that.
I think some level of a financial incentive because the nice thing about sporting events is they're not two hours. They're generally three or four hours. So, I mean, we could build a small part of that and have some level of, a low level stipend, if you will, that we would attach to something like that based on demand. I can foresee something like that. But I agree, you know, you're talking about people that possibly have a wife and kids and their own soccer practices to go to and their own life decided to do this between one mixture and that as well.
This is the teacher in me. I mean, I've been thinking of a procedure when everyone gets there, that all the kids are there and the parents and coaches. And step number one is, all right, does anybody have gum? Open your mouth. I mean, not just announce it beforehand and remind the parents and the kids, just, all right. Just, I know that sounds a little crazy, but that's how you get things, people on the same page and they're actually following. Following the procedure that you ask, that you require them to go through as part of the training for whoever's going to be down there in charge. And he says that. And everyone stops and people check mouths and look for food and power aid and whatever else before they go out. That's just me. That's what I would do because I was a teacher. If I hadn't been, I'd never think of it.
So a reality is when you go to fields that have artificial turf, there is generally somebody that comes around and they make sure that your chairs are off the artificial turf. I mean, there's someone that they come around and they keep telling you like, these are the rules, these are the rules, these are the rules. And so that does happen. It's whatever they decide these are the rules, they tell you.
In a situation like that, the employee from the school that's there can't do that work. And you almost have to hire additional people to be there who understand the rules and can enforce the rules or it damages that facility. And the reality is that it's a very expensive facility and we are going to have to update it in the future. We're going to do that later rather than sooner.
I think you have a great opportunity here. You know, working in Bullhead with the field house being built right now, you know, there's a lot of discussion on the problem of bringing some of these younger sports events in for smaller tournaments and overnight events because many districts and things have policies like you can't take the kids over state lines. Well, all the hospitality is in Laughlin, so you can't take them to Nevada. There's nowhere to stay in Bullhead. We can accommodate smaller tournaments here in Lake Havasu. We have the ability in this community to provide that hospitality. We have an asset now where we can hold some of these, you know, not great, big, huge events, but some decent-sized events. And, you know, we have a structure here that we can put in place for facility use. There's an opportunity here to be looked at, to build on and extend out into beyond our city. You know, our taxpayers didn't vote to put this in place to lock down this. You know, our, our taxpayers didn't vote to put this in place to lock down this just for, just for the school district. And, you know, I'm not saying open it up for Joe Q to go run at 2:00 AM. Absolutely not. It needs to be preserved for a specific use. But let's bring people in, let's use it, let's, you know, let's show it off. You know, it's, it's wonderful and I, I think we can do that in, in a really great way and get, you know, a little bit of revenue to kind of balance some of this as well.
What does it look, and I'm only asking you because I know you're around it all the time. What does it look like when you're renting a facility like that as part of a soccer organization or whatever? Because I know it's not a hundred bucks.
So I actually don't know. It actually was not, we've never run a tournament, so this is actually not our soccer league that did this, so I don't know. We've never.
There's another soccer league.
There's another soccer league. We've never actually run a tournament, so I have no idea what fees are. I only know like what going to a tournament looks like.
So when we're looking at, at the cost of replacing, straight up replacing the field, straight up replacing the track, do we know what that, those numbers are? I know we've talked about it before, but.
Two point five million according to Corvus. They were here doing the presentation, they renovated those fields down in Scottsdale, two point five million a pop.
The Scottsdale fields had some different products than what we had.
They had, they had to completely tear down and go all the way down, do a subgrade. So that was, that was pretty extreme.
But they would just need to replace the top layer.
They're talking more around about six hundred thousand for the turf, somewhere in that, in that range and pretty close to that, four hundred thousand ish for the track.
Okay. Yeah, you only understand this, you're right. I understand. So I, I would like to know all the costs, what it costs to have a security guard there, open the field, you know, be there for the whole event, walking around the track, back your chair, like what would that cost us?
Well, on page, page fourteen.
Personnel fees right now are just thirty dollars an hour.
Page fourteen, it shows that, gives the personnel fees, the hourly fee for the auditorium director, custodians, food, food service worker, groundskeeper.
No, I understand what we have here. I don't mean for what we already have in place. I mean, if we were going to open the facility up.
To just the public?
No.
Or just for tournaments or whatever?
No, for tournaments or whatever. It's not, it's not going to be one person there for the day. I would, I would assume we would need more people and maybe the thirty dollar wouldn't be the rate that we could be looking at for that facility.
Brady has staff for the football games. If you look at how we staff for our events, I think we would kind of look to what might be needed for a major event, the kind of recommendations were to have the security and the staffing.
But I would just like to see what it would cost us to rent it, what it would cost us and then also build in a percentage towards the replacement of the field or whatever as part of that cost. I would like to see those numbers before we actually made a decision on it because once you make a decision, I don't want to say, even if I'm not, but in the future, this isn't working out because we didn't calculate enough costs for it. At least if we're recouping some of the wear and tear fee, we could feel good about doing it. And then one more thing, and then I'll be done. I, I would like to reconsider having it open for use for the public, but maybe not the way you're thinking, you know, people didn't vote to not be able to use that facility. They didn't know that it was going to be shut down. We didn't say that, we didn't tell them that. So if there are people that, and I'm not saying have wide open gates, but if we have people, like I know some people are runners, that would run in lane three if you told them to run in lane three, if they had a key, if they, you know what I'm saying, that are, I don't want to just throw that out the window because now we're saying only people making a profit or only people running a 501(c)(3) with a ton of little kids with gum in their mouth can use the field, but the fifty-year-old person that wants to rundle over their cholesterol that lives in the neighborhood can't be, you know, trusted to have a key to go in without lights or whatever it may be. I just don't want to discount it before we've thoroughly had that conversation.
My quick Google search shows that San Diego charges a base fee for commercial use of two hundred and ninety-seven dollars an hour for your fields. It doesn't include personnel, it doesn't include restrooms. All of those are, are upcharged. I think restrooms are eighty-six dollars commercial and I saw anywhere from forty-six to a hundred and seventy-two dollars an hour for personnel. So we may want to revisit our fee schedule to, to our degree. My thought process is, I agree with Nicole that we didn't tell people that we were going to keep a lock on this. We put the lock on because the field is in disrepair. And now that we repaired the field, the lock's still on it.
Now that we repaired the field and spent eight hundred dollars to do it, put the lock on it.
Again, again. So, so I, I don't know. I, maybe there's some way that we could do like a Saturday, open track that's supervised for, come, come run, drop, you know, two or three bucks or something like that for the cost of a supervisor to be there. There's got to be a way that we can accommodate both our needs and the public's needs on or both. But I, I do think that what we need to do is, you've got people in queue that are waiting for answer.
I understand.
And so what I, what my thought process is, is are any of these going to be fee-based? Are they going to be renting that are in line that need something in the next thirty days to forty-five days?
The, the soccer team that requested it, their, their soccer tournament happened last weekend, so there, it's, the Pop Warner's coming in two weeks and then.
So Pop Warner would be a rental fee.
And then the Special Olympics, they, they would probably want to use the facility like they have for practices over at Thunderbolt.
So those are both rental fee?
I don't, do we charge Special Olympics?
We have not in the past charged.
Because by the, by the district.
And another like dynamic that probably should be considered is that, I know we have the IGA with the city and so when the soccer, when we were having a soccer tournament or we having, you know, field issues and so on, I request use of those fields. And so we were displacing potentially, we didn't end up doing it, but the potential to displace some of these local leads that are also tactiles, that are also voters, that are also future people, I mean, it was there. We had some people that were upset that there was a potential displacement, that we were going to take a field that they were using. But those relationships for us with the high school are, are in place, that when we need fields, I call and request and because of the IGA, we basically like bump. And I try to coactively work with those soccer leagues and other youth organizations ahead of time so that it doesn't displace as much as possible, but that is there. That's a dynamic to the relationship that we can kind of bump them and then we have this facility that then they can't use when, when they kind of request it, so.
To me, it's kind of like saying, we're not going to drive the brand new shiny car, we're just going to leave it in the garage and on special occasions, we'll take it to church. And you gotta use it. We didn't build it because we weren't going to use it. We don't want to abuse it though. And I think what we do is need to frame, frame something, I, I think in the next, next couple of cycles of board meetings where we can come back and we can have a better idea of what the fee schedule should be and also what, what we're going to allow or disallow kind of as a thought process. And I, I just look at it and, and, you know, you want to respect the field, you want to respect the investment, but then you've got the guy who owns his home who's paying, you know, a thousand dollars a year in county, county levying taxes, who's paying probably four hundred of that into Lake Havasu Unified School District and a chunk of that's falling in overrun. And then to look at it and say, yeah, thanks for the field, can't come and take a lap around it. How do you say no to the guy who's investing? You know, thanks for the investment, the kids really appreciate it and see you later. It's kind of a tough argument to make and then call ourselves good stewards. I mean, stewardship is a two-way street. You give and you receive. That's, that's my thought on it. Any other discussion on this?
You know, I don't think the comments are exclude things. My comments are simply designed to say that we meet the responsibility that the public's given us to watch out for their investment and if we can come up with some ways where it can be used in other capacities, that we ensure that the facility is protected. The public will accept that, but you know, the idea that hey, from, from six to ten at night, we're going to open up the gates and you can go and run and the guy shows up with the dog or whatever, or the kid on the skateboard, or the bicycles and stuff like that. All I'm saying is, I have no problem with the public using it. That doesn't scare me at all. But what I'm saying is, is that it just isn't wide open and that all of a sudden, in the future, we find out like that things have been compromised. You know, you know what I'm saying? Like, let's say they go in and they want to play football and they're wearing the wrong, the wrong cleats and, and stuff like that. It does not take too much and you've met their needs, but they leave and, and now you've got a problem and it's a little too late. That's all I'm saying.
Sure.
And, and I understand the administration's concern because I've been there and they're going to be the ones that get tasked with this. And, and what I would like to do is say, and I don't know if you've done it, but maybe, you know, I was even going to do it myself and I may do it, I will do it, but get ahold of some districts down in the valley where there are a lot of these facilities and they can give us an idea of how they go ahead and protect the facility. Now, in some cases, I'm sure they just say like, that, that, that they don't let anyone on it. And, and I know when I was back in Iowa where my grandson go to school, you, you can't get to the facility. If you go up to Bishop Gorman, you can't get on the facility. But if, you know, one's a public school, one's a private school. So that's all I'm saying. It's, it's no different than like you say with the track out at the Thunderbolt, the problems they've run into. And even though you have a mark, no dogs, no bicycles, none of this, none of that, believe me.
We would, we would be practicing and there would be people that were trying to run, like in our practices. And it's like, so I, I get those concerns, but it's like, I think, and that's a discussion that definitely needs to happen, you know, however you guys decide, but I, in terms of this immediate request.
How much notice did, have we had for the Pop Warner that's in two weeks?
Uh, they called me a couple of weeks ago and I sent, I think it was probably around fall break, they sent, I sent something to Mike and then we were talking and then they kind of called, they called again on Monday asking for some more.
Have they used it in the past?
They used, yes, they have used it in the past and I don't know if it's with this Super Bowl that they have, if it's like, and only when they qualify, depending on how their little week or season goes, or if this is a yearly thing, or, or what it really is.
And then when is the Special Olympics?
Um, yeah, Special Olympics is, is towards the end. They have one, I think they have one track fee that they do, that they would use Thunderbolt, but then they, they come and practice, they've always come and practice at, at Thunderbolt after, after our practices and wrap up.
So, I'm sorry, I just have a question. So I, I understand that you have to have special shoes on the field.
Yes.
And so then if someone didn't use the field, would they have, all those kids have to have special shoes then to kind of use the field?
Um, basically, most of the football, I don't think baseball uses metal spikes, I'd have to check, but most of the sports are not allowed to use metal spikes anyway. So those are the only cleats that are a problem, the plastic.
Baseball's metal.
Yeah, so then we would have, obviously, they're not going to play baseball on the football field, but.
So there would need to be published requirements, some things that were currently lacking in our, in our requirements for use as well.
Yeah. And so, but football right now, you, you can't, no love plays with, yeah, plays. Soccer, they check cleats before the game, they don't, they don't allow kids to play in metal cleats. So they, they're already in those rubberized cleats.
And what about on the track?
Um, track, we've tried to limit kids on, with the cleats. We've talked to all of our teams that we want them, we put out walking mats for them to walk across if they're using their cleats. And then if the walking mats aren't out, the kids will wear flats to where they're kind of shooting putter. And that's an issue that we're going to have to deal with when it comes to tracks because we do have kids that wear like those little quarter inch metal spikes on the track that they're not going to be able to warm up on the field, they're going to have to have. But we'll, we'll communicate all that information to all the teams that come up and that's what we've done with teams as they've come up. We've sent out information like, hey, we have a new turf, a new facility, this is what needs to happen, please use these areas. And, and most teams have been really good. There's other schools in the valley that use these facilities, so the, the rules are pretty much the same across the board.
Yeah, if, if you've traveled at all and traveled anything with, with Pop Warner or travel ball and baseball or any of it, you run into an artificial field. Or you've got an artificial pitching mound in baseball and you have to have the rubberized cleats for that.
And with the band, you know, issue of parents going out with the band, like the, the band teacher asked for permission to do that. I said that it was okay. We didn't allow parents to come out onto the field after football games like they had in the past because we'd have students with signs that have glitter, that have all kinds of things. So we just kind of moved that tradition to a different area as a result of that. And we announced that after every single game, our announcer pounced that message, started in the fourth quarter, that parents, you can meet your athletes here versus out onto the field like they used to.
So do you have a recommendation in the short term to answer the pending question for today until there's more of a conversation?
For, for me, when these, with, with the relationships that I see that we need to have as a district to be good neighbors, I, I think we, we probably should honor this request to allow Pop Warner to use the facility. And if these other types of recommendations from, you know, city leagues, like it's a one-time type thing, I mean, we wouldn't do it for like, we want to practice on it, we want to do this type of thing on it, we wouldn't do that. But to have, you know, one big event down there, I don't see a problem with that. I think that's part of being good neighbors, but they, their parents probably do pay, you know, for that facility as well.
Yeah, I'd like to see everybody be able to use it anytime the high school isn't using it, but I understand the concerns, but I think that we probably have some things to work out before we come up with a new standalone, probably.
Yeah, in terms of how, how much use you, and when you open it up to the gates, those gates, because then you, I mean, there's, there's a lot of money that's going to be stored down and around that field. A lot of equipment, you know, for track, for football and all that other kind of stuff that you have to make sure is absolutely one hundred percent secure.
Have you thought about the concession stand too? Because I know some of the individuals talked about those events since they're understanding that they want access to the concession stand too. That's usually a thing.
Currently in here, that does not permit access to the concession stand. They have to have their own table or designated area to sell items.
Well, I would be curious what nice fields like this charge for a weekend tournament because if we could make, I don't know. I mean, I'm thinking in the regular world, something like that, my mind could go for twenty thousand dollars. I don't know what the, I'm just saying, in entertainment or sports or whatever, it's so astronomical, so I don't know what those are. So I think that would be important to know because that would be kind of.
When AAU tournaments have come in to use our basketball facility and so on, then we do normally staff a custodian that they've paid for that's there. But I, yeah, with the football field, I don't know what has been done in the past because I haven't been in this position where it's been.
As we move forward, I, I think it's important that whatever is in this document, there's consistency in how one group is treated over another because, and here it does say that there, there needs to be a person, a district employee present at all times, which that's in addition to the facility use fee. So if we're going to make, if we're going to allow Pop Warner to use the facility, then are we going to abide by this and have someone stationed there during that event and paid, and being paid a paid physician to do so, that Pop Warner is going to pay us for those fees, for, for those individuals?
I, I think what we've got to do is, is we've got to look at the way this is broken down. What is our interest? What is community interest and what is a pure commercial use of the field? I mean, an outside tournament coming in is a pure commercial use of the field. Obviously, a home football game is our interest. We may deem that we're going to financially take the hit on something like Pop Warner or Special Olympics. That may be what we determine internally and it may be that some of these city leagues are going to have to pay at the cost recovery. That, that may be what we have to do is we have to say we're going to make. That, that may be what we have to do is we have to say we're gonna make some money on the commercial people, we're gonna recover our costs on these nonprofits coming in to use the field and anything we deem in our best interest, like a, like a city-type, type exchange or one of our internal used items, we are gonna pay, pay the cost on that. But, but again, that's part of that discussion. I think that's pretty much eliminated now the class structure that we have. So I, I just, I, I think...
Is the personnel section, is that a non-negotiable? While we might discount or waive the facility rental charge depending on who you are as far as a nonprofit in those classes, do we take the personnel fee a non-negotiable? Because we have to pay them, you know, we have to have somebody there and it's, that money's gonna come from someone.
That's, that's the even better discussion to have with the city because what the next stop for some of these organizations is gonna be is, well, we've always done it this way and we're gonna go right to the city and then we're gonna go, hey. I think that, that we, we've built a tradition that we have to look at and we have to try and honor the best we can. And if there's an additional cost to that, that's a discussion we can start having. But there are gonna be some that just don't, we're not gonna pay you. We've had this, we're gonna need for free and we're not gonna pay you.
Not the same a minute either?
No, no, it's not.
It's, it's interesting how, it's interesting how the minute you ask for money, that argument goes out the window with some people.
Mike, I have a question. When someone, an organization pays the fee, do they make the check out to Lake Havasu, the, the school district? Then how does that fee get posted? Does it, out of, is it, is there a fund? Where it goes to an auditorium fund, the fund where it goes to the high school?
I don't have my handy-dandy sheet here, but I think it's Fund 515. It's a school, it's a school... Civic Center, yep, Civic Center.
I'm just wondering if we're trying to, to help defer the cost of the, of the field in the future, it could be broken down and so that something could go to sort of a football field rather than just go into a, a general fund. I don't know.
Yeah, it is, it's broken, it's broken out to Fund 515 and all rental fees go there, whether it's the auditorium and any use of any of our facilities, it's deposited.
Do you understand what my question is about? Is keeping track of, of getting these costs back?
We can, we can run a report similar to the tax credit report you received last week and break it up.
Okay.
So I think from the conversation, what, what you would like from us is to bring you back some suggested revisions to the facility use general, some suggestions for the staffing that would be appropriate for use of our field, the cost for that, and then maybe a recommendation on next steps. Is that, is that fair to him?
But in the meantime, we need to decide about Pop Warner.
Well, let's, let's, let's get a motion to close discussion. We can see if we take action.
Summoned.
Good.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. And I'm gonna move that we extend to Lake Havasu High School's administrative team the ability in the short term until we have our revisions in place to give a shape and good faith for use of the facility with groups that we professionally have. Discussion?
So that would still go through Denise Corona's office, so that, we're just gonna continue on?
We're, we're gonna do business as usual until we get our revisions in place.
Can I make a suggestion though, that we actually have an official notification that we provided them that these are interim facility fees or facility usage requirements? Because we're in the process of revision, so that they don't expect that they are grandfathered in to use that field for free forever. And they may be, but nonetheless, it gives us the room to revise policy.
Common sense, yes. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, who's seconded?
Nicole.
Thank you.
Stop recording. I have to go. Okay.
You ready for the vote?
Ready.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any announcements as we go into our next board meeting, which will be the number twenty?
I, I have to add two things. One, I just didn't do enough today. There were a couple of questions that were asked at the last board meeting and so I sent that information to the board. The number of kindergartners that were come for after the deadline, information for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and then for eighteen nineteen. And then also the number of students that enrolled from outside of the district and moved to us in the classical academy. And, and just sent back the information that Mr. Bearman provided with younger siblings that will probably come into moving forward. And then the second thing I wanted to share, just, I don't know if you noticed that there is a screen there. The quality for what you all were looking and the glare behind it, it made it very difficult to see. So I thank our tech department for coming in and they're also doing some additional work in here that will help our, our sound. But, but today we got to see the new screen there, which allows that, for the board to see. So thank you.
Any other announcements, concerns, questions, recommendations? And let's go and move for adjournment.
I don't need much for adjournment.
Good.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Thank you.
Michael? No, because I didn't know. So he actually came in yesterday.
Yes, or Dan?
Yeah. About today, and then I contacted him. I got the question, do you, would you plan on the way there, do you want to reschedule? Somebody? I mean, because we, I have in the first part, Pop Warner for personnel fees. So I might, I might have it sitting there.
Thank you.